All right, so this is a regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners on October 5th of 2020. Today, and let me pull up our agenda here.
Commissioner Marissa, I can put the agenda in the chat.
Okay.
Once you get through that.
Sure, if you'd like to, that'd be great. So today, we will have an approval of the agenda, community informational items, commissioner clarification, public comments on items not on the agenda, and new business. In our new business, before we approve the agenda, I would like to make an adjustment to that and remove, let me see here, number seven, which is Boiler Repair Authorization with Tolan Mechanical. We are not ready for that at this point, and the Ellen Kirstine Fire Station Two contract as well. So Colleen will give us an update as well for for public health, and we'll do that during the public comment section. But for right now, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda with the removal of items number four and number seven.
I'll second that.
All right, Commissioner Glenn, do you have any further discussion?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. Commissioner Mudge?
No, thank you.
All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right, sounds good. So with that, we will start to move through our agenda. Community informational items, Commissioner Mudge, do you have any community informational items at this time?
Yeah, all things water, Dairy Three install is doing great with Public Works and the River Restoration Project. We are moving right along and should be done with that in the next week or two. Very exciting for the eventual administration of our augmentation plan. And our Basin Implementation Plan Update Workshop was held last week with lots of land management partners and water districts. So we are collecting a list of potential projects from conceptual to shovel-ready and plans, you know, with folks like MEWA or CPW Forest Service. Parkville, Lake County will all be adding projects to our Arkansas Basin Implementation Plan to include things like fuel mitigation projects, water right acquisitions, recreation management, water quality issues, and other things of the like. So it's very exciting to get people together.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Commissioner Glenn, do you have any community informational items?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. And for myself, I have just been continuing to work on early childhood education initiatives and brainstorming with CCI and Local Resources, Mayor Lobby, and Julie McCusky to try to come up with some solutions and and fixes for early childhood education in rural communities like ours that are affected by that. Continuing to work with Building and Land Use and the Economic Development Corporation on the Airport Industrial Park. We've made some good headway there, and I think that we'll continue to make headway once we hear from DOLA on if our ready grant application was accepted or not, and then determine what our next steps are from there. So that's all the updates I have at this point. Okay, so with that, we will move into commissioner clarifications. Commissioner Glenn or Commissioner Mudge, do you have any commissioner clarifications at this point?
I do not.
Okay, Commissioner Glenn?
I have nothing.
All right, thank you very much. So with that, we're going to move into public comments on items not on the agenda. And at this point, I'm going to hand this over to Colleen Nielsen, who is our Director of Public Health, to give us an update on the COVID pandemic response. After that, we will move into public comment from any members of the public that are here that would like to make a comment at that point. So with that, Colleen, I'm going to hand it over to you. If you cannot share your screen, I believe that Commissioner Mudge or myself can give you the ability to do so.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Kayla. So I haven't had a formal presentation, if you will, to all three commissioners. So I'm so thankful to have the opportunity to talk to all three of you and just update you and answer any questions that you might have. The first thing that I was going to talk about was just some of the grant funding that we have and some of the ways that we have been utilizing it here in the community. And so we do have three different sources of grant funding, including CARES funding specifically, that was given to public health. Two of the big pieces that we've done is we have worked with the school district and Full Circle, and we have been able to support what we are calling the Family Connectors. And so this is a group of parents, two for each school, that have the ability to reach out to parents directly and talk about kind of what's happening in the school. Obviously, from the public health standpoint, it's COVID-19 specific. As, you know, being available, hearing what parents are saying, and making sure we're providing accurate information, it's been a great resource to reach a group that we haven't been able to necessarily reach accurately and effectively. So I'm excited about this. Our funding will pay for this programming through December, and then the school district will continue that funding through the rest of the school year, starting in January. So that is one of our big projects that we've partnered with. Another big project that we partner with is with Build a Generation and with two, kind of a two-tiered approach of how we are doing language here in our community. So the first tier is we are working with our Latina Lideras group, and they are identifying people who have the ability to do simultaneous translation. We found with our response to COVID that we haven't always had the ability to have simultaneous translation occurring in our town halls. And so we feel that that's a very important piece. And instead of continuing to hire outside sources, we are working with the Language Cooperative out of Denver to provide that training here. And our goal is to have at least seven or eight people trained in that, that we can all utilize across all of our agencies. So not just public health specifically, but but all of our agencies when we are having meetings, seeing that we will continue to be in this Zoom world for quite a while. So I think that is great. And then the second tier to that is offering to agencies the importance of, you know, what language acquisition is, how you can do this more effectively, kind of the history of having this ability and having those resources available. So those are the big pieces. And then we are exploring right now an electronic health record. For most of you, you know that we currently continue to paper chart, which you can imagine is not necessarily the standard. But because of the funding that we have, we are looking at a couple of different models and setting up sometimes to work with different companies right now. The one that's in the forefront is a company called Patagonia. El Paso County uses this a lot of their software, talks to the actual state databases. So basically, what happens is we, you know, enter on a paper chart, and then we have to re-enter it into, you know, a separate database. So if we had an electronic health record that talks to these databases, it's, you know, a one-time entry going out to the appropriate databases. So it is very promising, and we'll work that out as I see, once we have some pricing, then I will reach out to Kayla, whom I report to, to kind of work back and forth. And then we'll present it, you know, out to the board if that's something that we feel that we can support. And I feel confident that our funding can support that. But if not, that that might come back to the board as an ask of, hey, can you match X amount of dollars? I don't even have a price tag on that right now. So just letting you know that it's in the works. As far as staffing, we just hired a contact investigator and contact tracer. So that is exciting. That person's coming on 20 hours a week, and that should hopefully alleviate some of our caseload. We are still doing well. We're not overwhelmed, but we do see our cases continuing to grow. As of last week, our positivity rate was at, just going to look at leases, was at about 4%. And then that will help me kind of move into the way that the state is now tracking all the different counties and all of their metrics, so to speak, because the state went to what's called the dial system. I will show that to you here in a second. It is located on the CDPH website. And if I can share my screen, I can show you, and then I can put that link into the chat as well. But basically, we are still at safer at home. Because of our positivity rate, we haven't shifted. We haven't moved. We did put in a new public health order a week ago to reflect the new dial system. And what's nice about that is that really gives people an opportunity, people, businesses, community, to see where we stand and see if we have movement one way or another, what each of those different colors, if you will, look like. So if I'm able to share my screen, I don't check. And it looks like I can. So give me one second as I get my thing up and around.
This is Commissioner Mudge, Colleen, or Kaylee, I see on here too. I have not jumped on any calls lately talking about resorts in the winter season. Has there been any new, any updates on moving forward and anticipated kind of procedures and methods that are being explored?
Yeah, so I can speak to that. So I am actually on the work group for winter recreation and ski resorts with CALFO. And we have kind of been working behind the state's work group. A draft just came out last week for ski resorts. There are, at the state level, there are a lot of folks, you know, all different interests, from, you know, county commissioners and public health to actually ski resorts. And I cannot remember, and I apologize, the name of the organization that Ski Cooper Works is affiliated with. But they are sitting in on that work group. We have reached out to Ski Cooper directly, and they had said they feel confident that they are putting a plan in place that will be in alignment with what the state guidance will look like. As you can imagine, once that guidance comes out, Cooper did say that they will share a plan to ensure that they did not want to do that prior in case there was something that they were missing in their plan. And so, you know, the big pieces really are going to be around capacity and how the different resorts are managing that, as well as the spaces. Because there's some resorts that, you know, are looking at like a metering system, you know, only a certain amount of people coming up, as well as only a certain amount of tickets sold that day. I have not heard what Ski Cooper's plan is at this point. But the other thing to keep in mind is because of the limitations with the lodge, a lot of the recommendations are, you know, utilizing utilizing those spaces as truly most of them have, like a restaurant in them, looking at capacity in restaurant, but not having the ability to truly be like a warming hot, like no gear inside, like no bags left unattended, kind of a thing where it's, you know, you're in, you're out. And so I will be interested to see where Ski Cooper is at and how they are going to make that happen. So hopefully, there'll be some movement on that. I'm guessing the state is talking about that guidance being out by midweek to the end of this week, because they did ask for, you know, recommendations through the weekend. And so I'm thinking that is forthcoming. The process, the way it looks like right now, is that Ski Cooper would need to submit to the local public health agency. And then I would, we, I would have, you know, hey, does this make sense? Are they following, you know, what some of the recommendations are? And then we would have to push that up to the state if everyone agrees. So that would include Board of County Commissioners, City Council, and anyone else that we think has a stake in that to agree to the plan. And so obviously, we'll share that all out together. And then the state, it sounds like from the last that I heard, would would be the final decider, if you will, to say, yes, that makes sense. We haven't heard yet whether or not it's going to be a site-specific variance issued from the state level, not necessarily like Lake County applying for something, or if it's just going to be, this is a ski area, here's how, you know, here's all of the, you know, guidance, and it falls into local, you know, jurisdiction to, you know, handle anything that might come up. So that is still to be seen, and that is kind of where we're at at this point in time.
Thank you.
Great. So what I pulled up on the screen is the dashboard for the state. And so if you come up here, it talks about the Colorado County COVID-19 status. And it talks about overall county status. It has different colors. So basically, we're in yellow, which is safer level two. And so if you look at these categories, and you've heard all of these categories talked about before. So safer at home has three levels. Stay at home is all the way to the right, which is red, which means nothing is happening. Everything's closed down, positivity rates, you know, are through the roof, and we don't have any, or we have multiple outbreaks. And then protect our neighbors is on the far end of the spectrum, where we have stabilization of cases. You know, we're staying below 5% positivity rate, and we have the ability to move into that. The good news is that we are currently at yellow. If we start seeing really great numbers in our county, it doesn't necessarily have to be incremental for us to go from yellow to blue to green. If we have good numbers, we can then approach the state to say, hey, we've been able to maintain this for, you know, a couple of weeks. We feel confident. There's a couple of metrics that we've talked about in the past as far as hospital capacity, the positivity rate, and our ability to contact trace and do all those pieces to feel comfortable moving into that rate. But if I click on Lake County specifically, it'll say that we currently do not have any variances because of where we're at with safer at home. Any variance that we had in the past is current, or excuse me, you know, we do not have because of the fact that our current public health order and the state's current public health order covered all of those things. And then as far as additional county details, if you click on that, I will show you. That'll be my next thing I share, but it'll bring you to our actual specific Lake County dashboard. So that's kind of a nice little link in for folks to kind of get to our information. But if I click link, or excuse me, I click lake, hopefully it'll work. Sometimes it doesn't. There we go. So as you can see, it kind of shows the whole dial, talks about where we're at, and so it has the different colors. So when we look at our two-week cumulative incidence rate, we have to recognize that that is per 100,000. And when we look at our average positivity rate, we're at 4.7, according to the state. There's usually a lag in time for information from the state, but that is pretty accurate. And then the other thing that the state is looking for is no more than two new hospitalizations reported per day in the past two weeks in Lake County. And as we know right now, we currently do not have any hospitalizations here in Lake County. So those are the big three things that the state is tracking. And so with each of those levels, there are corresponding guidance for what's happening in different industries. We have that information on our particular, which we'll call it, on our website. So I will share that here now. Just got to move some stuff around. All right, so if you were to click out from the state site, or if you go onto lakecountyoem.org backslash covid-19, this is what you would find. So this is where we're at with Lake County. So it's the same dial. We have a little bit more information of how it affects us. So it talks about, you know, all of the, you know, social distancing and hygiene requirements. So no matter what phase we're in or stage we're in, none of those pieces go away. I think that's important to recognize that there isn't any, you know, free ticket or anything. It's, this is where we're at until, as a state, you know, we're comfortable in looking at some of the other practices. And that's really going to happen when we know that we have effective treatment methods or we have widespread vaccination. I guess widespread vaccination to provide a little bit more immunity across the state. So if you scroll down, it does talk about local industry operating guidance. And so there, depending on what industry you're looking at, tells you kind of where you're at and what your numbers can be. And so if we were to go, say, our numbers start increasing, and we're getting higher than 5% positivity rate, and we are, you know, we're seeing more outbreaks and those things, then we might be looking to move into like a higher heightened level. And that would be, are the level orange? And so with that being said, it's not something that happens automatically. It's usually tracking the data over two weeks. And if we see the trend and it's continuing to increase, and we're not getting a handle on it as a community, because a lot of it will just depend on where we're seeing, you know, infections and things like that, then we kind of go on to, like, and I'll use that in quotes, like a probation status. And if after, you know, basically, if after, you know, two weeks and then probation status, trying to see if we can't decrease our rates, that would be about 28 days. And then if we still are in the same position and our rates continue to increase, then we would move into the next, you know, we move down the dial into the, you know, the higher caution level. So that would be orange. And then there, we would have the different guidance that shows what would happen at each specific industry. The good news is, like I said, that's not something that happens overnight. It'd be something that we'd be monitoring. It'd be something that we would be communicating out to the public, recognizing that our numbers. Because right now, we're kind of in the same, kind of cadence, the same rhythm of, you know, we see an increase in cases, and then there's, you know, a couple of days of decreases in cases. So our last reported case was on Friday, and that puts us at 99 cases. And we have nothing at this point in time to report in our system. That's not to say that, you know, we anticipate a couple more cases because of people getting tested that are in, like, what we would call these little clusters or family groups kind of thing. So we do expect, obviously, to continue down, you know, kind of an increase in cases, then a low. And that's just kind of that up-down, up-down, normal epidemiological curve. So the point being is that we would be watching this. We'd be communicating that out and ensuring that, you know, any business that this might impact would have the information that they need. We are doing a meeting with the Economic Development Corporation on October 15th. I want to say, I have to actually look to do a presentation specifically to businesses that may not have seen any of these presentations so that they're aware and make sure that we're answering questions. So yes, that would be October 15th, and that is the the Winter Business Roundtable, and that is at 15:00 to 9:30 on Thursday, October 15th. And we will do a presentation for anyone who is attending. You'll see this dial again. And we'll just be doing it more in a PowerPoint and kind of showing some pieces and then, you know, getting information from that meeting to make sure that we're answering any questions that people might have. So that's kind of the dial, and that's kind of where we're at overall. So like I said, we just kind of have been in a holding pattern for a couple of months at this point in time. So nothing has changed dramatically. Obviously, we have back to school. We've been working really closely with the school district, ensuring that we're doing everything that we can in order to decrease the spread of infection. So far, the good news is, is that we haven't had any secondary infections, meaning that there wasn't somebody at school who then infected somebody at school. It's been more of what's been happening outside of, you know, the school setting, you know, in family groups, in, you know, personal gatherings and things like that. So that really shows to me that those layers of protection that have been put into the school district are being effective at not, you know, increasing spread, if you will. Any questions?
I don't think so. Colleen, you said that there is a roundtable on October 15th. Is that correct?
That is correct, and that's being put on by the EDC.
Okay. I will make sure to connect with Marla so that I get that put out on our calendar as well, our planner, so that that people know about about that happening. And that's open to any business that may have questions about the COVID response.
So we are a piece of that puzzle. I would reach out to Marla because it's, it's a little bit, yes, it's definitely COVID, and it's moving into the winter months and giving the different types of businesses, kind of putting them together in workgroups, is my understanding. Marla would have a much better, like, description. I know my part is to come in, show the dial, and then, you know, workgroups have an opportunity to meet and really figure out, you know, what their planning is. So it's really trying to get some businesses into that mindset of planning if we go one way or another. And unfortunately, for a lot of our, specifically when I think of our restaurants, that even if we move all the way up into protect our neighbors, meaning that we have a decreased infections, we're stable, the capacity doesn't increase. So it's not this big increase, so truly is operating at 50%, you know, throughout the winter. And obviously, with losing some outdoor seating, I think that becomes the bigger conversation than I know is happening in other circles.
Thank you, Colleen.
I don't feel like I have any questions for Colleen at this point. Does anybody else have any questions for Colleen at this point?
I do not.
Okay, Commissioner Glenn, do you have any further questions for Colleen?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you very much, Colleen. We do appreciate your time today. We'll see you at our next regular meeting.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate being able to present first. And if there's any follow-up, please don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you.
Wonderful, thanks. All right, so with that, we will move into public comments on items not on the agenda from anyone in the public today. Does anybody have any public comments for items not on the agenda? You can raise your hand, and I will call on you. And we will give you three minutes at that point to make public comments. This is an opportunity to just open up a conversation with the board. It's not necessarily an opportunity to start a back and forth with the board, but we want to remind everyone to keep their comments respectful as well. All right, I do not see anybody on here raising their hand for public comment. Again, if you have a public comment and are not able to attend the meeting, you can email those comments to one of the board members to be read into the record as well. Yes, Sarah?
I just also forgot to make mention of the response to the letter that went out on behalf of the board and and the city to Mountain View Village and let everybody know that the owner of the Trailer Home Park did respond and let us know that they, at the same time we are sending out communications, they were sending out communications to their residents in Mountain View Village to let them know that they had postponed. They are postponing the increase in the space rents for the time being. My understanding is at least until January. But the ongoing conversation with the the landowner seems to be, you know, a very, very fruitful one. He's very willing and eager to, and appreciative of all the help that the Unmet Needs Committee has been able to provide in making payments on behalf of mobile homeowners and residents in the in the park. And so I just wanted to share that good news.
Thanks, Sarah. Yeah, I do believe that that letter was very well received and very, very collaborative. So I'm very thankful for those conversations taking place as well. All right, so with that, we will move into our agenda and our regularly scheduled new business items here. Number one is Carol Bellhaus presenting for Todd Hennessy, a request to reopen and extend an old driveway across county property to access his lot on the National and Union Plaza. So with this, I'm going to hand it over to Carol Bellhaus, and I see that Paul Clarkson from Building and Land Use is here as well to answer any questions that we may have about this. So Carol, if you'd like to walk us through this request, that'd be great.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
All right, so in the package is a map that will help you visualize what I'm talking about here. When you head down Highway 24 toward Univista, you get off on Valley Road, and you can follow the Valley Road up here. At this switchback, there is an old road that goes up the valley that has been just kind of left to itself all these years. The National and Union Plaza, which is all of this, is owned by the county. But before 1972, as I proved to Paul, it was divided into lots one through seven. And these basically don't have any access without this road, this old road going up here. Dennis Zadra does have a road up to his place, but it's not usable by the other lots. So in your package, you will see that we have So in your package, you will see, um, that we have the easement assignment. Across the private property here and on to Lake County property. And we have, as you can see from your package, um, approval from. Mike Irwin at the Road Department. An email with Paul and he's here to answer any questions. I've included a copy of the easement, so you can see that. And I have a proposed resolution ready to go for your signatures because I. I think it's just basically an uncontested matter and just a matter of signing the resolution and getting it cleaned up and available. To use not only for Todd's. Lot seven at the very end there, but for, you know, the three other lot owners that have no access at this point. So it just cleans up some things and it's approved by everybody at, at the county level. Except for the commissioners at this point.
All right. Thank you, Carol. Um, Paul, do you have information to add to this, this file or this request?
Uh, there, there appeared to be some confusion over the weekend, I think, as to whether. Todd Hennessy is the owner of a. I think it's a mining company. And he owns upwards of 20 or his company owns upwards of 26. Other properties in Lake County and there was some confusion as to whether this National and Union Placer. Or I think the Pima Placer were one in the same and, and they are not in fact one in the same. Um, and Carol has demonstrated to me that. Those seven lots were created prior to Senate Bill 35 and are therefore grandfathered. And it just seems to me that the, the county is just like another private property granting access. To get to another property. And it, it seems to me as Carol described it to be pretty cut and dry.
Commissioner Mudge or Commissioner Glenn, do you have any questions on this matter at this point?
I don't. Having looked through the packet, thank you very much, Carol and Paul. Um, and seeing as Carol pointed out, Michael Irwin's. Uh, acceptance with the few conditions that the applicant has already met. And will meet as far as any, uh, maintenance issues, I believe that might be on there. I think that's important that, to know that Michael Irwin has already. Addressed the request. And the only other item I just do want to, um, state is that the. The record number, the property number, R004545, was it, pulls up with two. Properties of the county and maybe this is what you were talking about, Paul, but I. I think because of the map that Carol has shown, it's clear and with no other in holdings on. Kind of the two that, that hour and may or may not be appropriately associated with that on the tax parcel viewer. I think it's clearly demonstrated, um, which, which county-owned property, um, we're, we're talking about. So. Just wanted to make that statement and I, I don't see any objections. I don't know if legal reviewed the resolution, um, but I am comfortable to make a motion to approve that. With a, a legal review.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Um, Paul. There, so there was some confusion over the weekend and it turned out that it was two different things, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure. Typically going through this process, it doesn't require any kind of notification or anything like that. Right?
No, I wouldn't think so. This is just like. I'm, I'm me, Paul Clarkson, and I'm granting access across my parcel to get to Carol Bellhaus's person. No different than that.
All right, sounds good. Commissioner Glenn, do you have any further questions or comments on this, um, application in front of us today?
No, I don't have any issues with this.
Okay, wonderful. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion. If you'd like, um, Sarah, for your clarification, I have not had the resolution run through any legal at this point. I've only had conversations with Paul. About, uh. The, the property.
Okay. I'll, I'll move to approve the request for access. Across the county-owned National and Union Placer. Uh, R004545 in order to gain access to Todd Hennessy's Lot Seven property. Given, uh, with legal review of the resolution and any. Uh, adjustments that might need to be made.
Okay. I will second that. So we have a motion and a second on the table. Commissioner Glenn, do you have any further discussion at this point?
I do not.
Commissioner Mudge?
What resolution number would that be? Do we know?
It would be 14.
14. All right. No, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Carol, I am going to coordinate with legal just to, um, take a quick look at the resolution and then. Once legal gives it their approval, I will get it, be sure to get it signed by my fellow board members and myself and get a copy over to you.
Fabulous. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carol. Thank you for your research and have a great day.
Thanks, Carol.
Okay, so we will move on to number two, which is Cooper Hills Ski Area Incorporated. And they are asking for the addition of an optional premise. To the existing hotels, but restaurant liquor license. Wow, that's a mouthful. So this is asking for an extension of the premises for their liquor license. Patty forwarded to us the application over the weekend. Patty, do you have any questions, concerns or complaints or anything with this liquor license that you'd like to share with us?
I do not. It's for a second optional premise. The original optional premises for the yurt on top of the mountain, this is going to take another building. To have access for alcohol, so they disperse because of the COVID.
Okay. Okay.
Everything appears to be in order and the fees have been paid.
All right. Thank you, Patty.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Mudge or Commissioner Glenn, do either of you have any questions or comments for, um, Patty at this time regarding this application?
I don't have any concerns.
I don't have any concerns either. Um. Curious if they're. They're, they're, they're going to. Add a location, a current location, I'm presuming?
Yeah.
The, the current location?
An additional building, they will be serving alcohol in. At the bottom of the hill.
Okay. And I presume that that's, that will be the plan that will be submitted to Public Health for, um, final review.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. All right. No further questions or comments at this point on the application? All right. I will make a motion that we approve the Cooper Hills Ski Area Incorporated. Addition of an optional premises to existing hotel restaurant liquor license.
Second.
All right. Commissioner Glenn, do you have any further conversation or discussion around the motion?
I do not.
Commissioner Mudge?
No, thank you.
All right. Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Thanks Patty for getting that task. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. So we will move on here. I'm sorry, let me pull up my chat here. Okay, so we will move on to number three, which is the appointment of Larry Markham to the Board of Adjustment. So Anne Schneider is joining us from Building and Land Use and I will let you take it from here. Oh, you're muted.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
There you go.
So Larry has shown an interest in participating as an alternate on the Board of Adjustment. A resident of Twin Lakes and has done, um, has had a presence in that area and, and really a great representative from the southern. Corridor of the county. And so we're excited to see that he would like to join as an alternate to that, um, board. We currently have three people seated and inevitably, um, we need an alternate. So, um, super excited to have his interest and, and like to endorse him for, um, that seat as an alternate.
Thank you, Anne. Commissioner Glenn or Commissioner Mudge, do you have any questions on this appointment as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment?
I do not.
I do not.
All right. I will make a motion that we accept the application of Larry Markham as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Glenn, do you have any further discussion at this point?
I do not.
Commissioner Mudge?
No, thank you.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Anne. If you will connect with, um, Mr. Markham and get him any materials that he needs, that'd be great.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much for joining us today. Um, number five is fogger disinfectant backpack purchases with CARES Act funding. Amber had been doing some research on this for us and so she has, um, brought this to see if we would like to. Appropriate some CARES Act funding towards the purchase of these fogger backpacks. Um, I believe that they would be used in multiple facilities, um, that the county owns and maybe operating for programming. So. Amber, I'm gonna let you, um, talk about these and the purchase of these since you have those details. Amber, are you there?
Sorry, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, sorry. Okay, let me share this. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, um. I spoke with Eva Muscarinas at the school district to get her recommendation on a product. She purchased some of these for the school district. She purchased an X-Power, uh, model, which the, I did not get pricing on. I spoke with the rep at Waxy and he said while that is an adequate model, it does not work as well as the Protexis and Bissell brands. So he recommended those over the model that the school district purchased. So what we have quoted here are the Protexis brand and the Bissell brand. There's a backpack option as well as a portable handheld option. Both of these are made by the same company called Victory. There is a price difference that I. Can't 100% explain to you, but they're basically the same option from two different companies. The Bissell is more expensive, however, they are likely to be available this week. The Protexis are backordered for at least two months. So that is something to take into consideration. And, um. Then there are also two different options listed here for sanitizing options, the Pure Tabs. They are hard to get, so, um. Our Waxy rep Bruce also quoted us this Waxy HP disinfectant cleaner. He said it works just as well. It also kills all the same things, including COVID. So, um, I don't have a specific recommendation for the board on how many. I might suggest, uh, three in a backpack model, three in a handheld model. To be dispersed across facilities and locations. I think they will primarily be used by the custodian staff. But they can also be used by maintenance department staff, recreation staff, et cetera. So I think, um. You know, having some that live in a building. Larger buildings like the courthouse might benefit from the backpack style. The handheld only holds 32 ounces, I believe. So they don't last quite as long, but that could serve us a smaller building like the Sixth Street Gym or the Huck Finn Ice Rink or, or one of those spaces. And the other thing that I want to put in front of you just quickly. Is, uh, that these prices, uh, quoted on here are only valid if we have applied for a cooperative purchasing agreement. So, uh, what Bruce has recommended as well is that we enter into, uh. Cooperative purchasing agreement through the NCPA and I'm gonna read this to you. Cause I don't have it verbatim, but, um, it's basically a government purchasing cooperative. They basically help reduce the cost of goods and services by leveraging purchasing power. So when they offer products, they go out to bid and then they work with the local lowest bidding company. To provide products to everyone that's part of this purchasing agreement. There is no obligation to purchase from anyone by participating in this. It's really just buying into this group. Purchasing power. The local school district here is part of this. And so Bruce says, uh, we, he recommends that we apply for this first before moving ahead with the purchase. It's a really simple one-page registration. I already looked at it. But it's about $200 to $300 more per item if we are not part of this cooperative agreement. So I wanted to recommend to the board, um, whether you want someone else to do it or I'm happy to register us that we participate in this. And this will not only save us on this purchase, but it will also save us on purchases that we're already making. So we purchased our hand soap, um, through Waxy and, um. That would save us on that product. I believe that's the only other product that maintenance is currently purchasing through them. But, um, once we have applied to this agreement, we may want to do some price comparison and see if there's. Other discounts we might be able to take advantage of and lessen some of those other purchasing costs. The, uh. I'm sure if I click over this other tab, you won't be able to see it, but NCPA also lists all of the other companies that they work with. That we might want to consider other vendors for purchasing in future, future years. So I'm going to be quiet and let you guys ask questions.
Thanks, Amber. Um, Commissioner Mudge or Commissioner Glenn, do you have any questions for Amber right now at this point on, um, the request for this purchase?
I don't have anything.
I don't have any. I wonder, um, Amber, if you talked to Michael Irwin at Public Works and to clarify that we don't already have some of that. Purchasing power through, um, the pool that, um, Public Works is a part of. That might streamline it, but I definitely appreciate, um. You bringing that opportunity to the board and that is something that we should definitely take advantage of. Especially in, in, you know, day-to-day. Purchases. So thank you.
Sarah, I did talk to Michael about this because I have experience with these kind of agreements. And he said absolutely that is something we should completely bear participating in. And he does have, he has agreements through Public Works, but not for products like this.
Okay.
It's a big, like, leap and those types of things. So. He's on this call, but, um, he had thought that this was a good opportunity to, to participate in.
Absolutely. No, and I, um, I think that, uh. I'd like to accept your recommendation, do three of the backpacks and three of the handhelds. And, um, I think the, one of the top priorities that we talked about when you brought the opportunity to us. Um, as far as environmental cleaning goes is especially for the, um, outdoor. Restrooms that were used through the summer and, um. I know that we can find, uh, a good system to, to put these to good use. And I know that we can find a good system to put these to good use throughout the community. So I do appreciate that. And I wonder, I wonder too, if we might think about any facilities down south that could benefit.
What about the visitor center in town and the visitor center in Twin Lakes?
Mm-hmm.
I think, I think Twin Lakes would, would really like, go ahead, Sarah.
No, I'm sorry. I was just repeating what I think you're gonna say. I agree. I was thinking of the visitor center down there as well. And this is something that we would be able to use CARES funding for. And so maybe even, maybe even adding a couple of those handheld ones, three, three backpacks and maybe five handheld, so that we're sure to get some high-level areas, like visitor centers.
And like City Hall, like common spaces, I'm thinking?
Mm-hmm. Does City, Amber, did you reach out to City Hall and see if they wanted to combine or participate in the purchase of any of these? Maybe we could ask them if they'd like to purchase a few?
No, I have not reached out to City, but I'm happy to make that connection and see if they would like to purchase them as part of this order.
That would be great, I think. Please. So maybe with the addition of the two visitor centers, three backpacks and five handhelds, after we submit our application for the, what is, what is it called? Sorry.
Uh.
Hour.
Yes, I will do that first before moving forward on this purchase. What we do need to decide, though, is
Which?
Which, which model we want to proceed with, if we want to wait a couple of months and till the Protexis is back in stock, or I don't know where folks, I don't know how urgent this is for folks, if we want to try to move forward with the Bissell, which is slightly more expensive, but will be in stock sooner.
I think we need to have it in hand sooner than later and put it into practice and just have them available to add to our, our ability to respond to, well, to COVID, but environmental cleaning around in general. So I would be happy, and is, am I understanding this right? The last three are a group and the first three are a group, basically?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'd, I'd be in favor of getting that in hand sooner than later, so that we can get it, get it implemented.
Amber, Chris put in the chat, is there a difference in the warranties provided on the units at all, do you know, or are they warranted?
I don't know, but I can ask.
Okay. I don't feel like I have anything further at this point, or any questions at this point. Commissioner Glenn, do you have any questions or comments about the backpacks or the necessity for them, or have any ideas of where else we could put them?
The only question I have is, I'm not comfortable approving something when I don't have all the information about all the units. The, the plan is good, yes, I'm in favor of that, but I'm not willing to spend any money until I know what it's gonna cost the taxpayers.
So on the, the information that Amber just showed us, the Bissell backpacks are $1,900 apiece. And then these will come out of our CARES funding from the state.
Well, then it must be okay.
Okay.
So approximately total would be $2,800 for the three products, the, the, I mean, the, sorry, the backpack, like you said, Commissioner Marcello, is about $1,900, and the handheld was about, was it $800? And then the solution, I think, Amber, correct me if I'm wrong, the supply is over, just over $100?
Yeah.
Yep.
For a case.
For a case of it. How long will a case last, four in a case of? Well, and, and, yeah, how long will a case last? I mean, maybe you can just determine how much, what, what'll bring us through till next April, Amber? Did we lose Amber?
No, I think she's still on here, because she's sharing her screen.
Oh, sorry, I muted myself. Yeah, I can do that. I mean, not my area of expertise, so I'm, I don't want to over or order under, eh, over or order under, and I don't know that we need to order it all at once, but I'm happy, you know, I think purchase, I will ask Bruce what his thoughts are on that.
Why not? I mean, you're right. Let's, I mean, we'll order the case, and then as we get to using the equipment, we will see. And we'll, as you said, have some cost savings, which I'd be curious for, to track and, and report back on being a part of that purchasing group.
Yep.
All right. I don't have any further questions. So Commissioner Glenn, it looks like it's $2,800 for the backpacks. And then what did you say for the, let me do something, the, did we say five sprayers?
Yes.
Yeah.
Five, yeah, so three backpacks, five of the handheld, and then I don't, you know, a case maybe too. I don't know. I'd like to ask Bruce how long that will last, which I will find out.
Yeah.
So Commissioner Glenn, it looks like probably estimating like $5,500 that will take out of the CARES Act funding for, for those tools and, and the, the spray.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right. Commissioner Mudge, do you have any other questions on this?
We don't. We don't. I'll, I'll move to approve the purchase of three of the Bissell backpacks and five of the handheld, as well as the solution for use, to be paid for with CARES funding, and used with custodian staff, maintenance, and at the visitors' center, centers.
Okay. I will second. Commissioner Glenn, do you have any further questions or discussion?
I do not.
All right. Commissioner Mudge?
Nope, just to, thanks, Amber, for submitting that purchase power application and reaching out to the city to ask them if they'd like to purchase as well.
No problem.
Right. Awesome. So with that, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 All right, wonderful. Thank you very much. And we will move on to item number six. Thanks, Amber. We really appreciate it. Newmont Mining Easement. So this was brought to us by Sterling Mudge from the Cloud City Wheelers. And so I will turn it over to him at this point to give us a breakdown of his request, and we will go from there. So Sterling, if you'd like to, um, talk to us a little bit about this easement request, and, and then we will go from there.
Can everybody hear me?
I can.
And, okay. Well, thank you for the time, everybody. Quick background on the Wheelers is, just in case nobody knows, we've been around since 2007. Currently have a membership of 179 people. We have built and maintained 15 miles of trail at the Timberline Trail System, which was approved in 2009 by the B.O.C.C. and Colorado Mountain College. In this Timberline Trail System, it is a year-round trail opportunity area, as we maintain it during the summertime as well, excuse me, as well as maintain it throughout the winter for winter riding and skiing and snowshoeing opportunities. The Wheelers are currently building its sixth mile of trail out at Turquoise Lake right now, employing eight part-time employees this summer. In regards to the Newmont area, we've been working with Newmont for around a year, trying to, we initially started the conversation with them in regards to a lot of the existing user-created trails that exist on the east side and the mining district, where Newmont currently owns a lot of land. It was through their recommendation that we start fresh and propose constructing some new purpose-built trails closer to town. So we continued this conversation and proposed four miles of trail in the Oregon Gulch area, which will have a, the closest link from town to the Minnerbelt Trail via a natural surface trail in the area. Current use in the area is mostly, people use it mostly for illegal dumping, honestly. And the trails were routed to avoid any crossings with any existing motorized routes, so not to create any potential for user conflict. We see, we see trails as they encourage safe and healthy outdoor recreation and add to the economic vitality of the county. And that's, this is why we are pursuing this, this project for, for the community. So the general idea of this request is to have the county hold the easement with Newmont to provide outdoor recreation opportunities in, in Leadville.
All right. Thank you, Sterling. This was vetted through legal. Chris, did you have anything to add to this at this point, or any questions or concerns for Sterling about the request for the easement?
Yes, thank you. I was provided with a copy of the proposed documents and have provided some comments on that to Commissioner Mudge. A couple of my concerns with this is that, as drafted, the easement, the proposed easement, does place a lot of responsibility on the county and potential liability for the use of these trails. Even though it sounds like the Cloud City Wheelers has raised funds and plans to be responsible for building and maintaining the trails, I, I think we probably need to, to look a little closer at what responsibilities the county would be taking on. And it concerns me a little to hear Sterling say that part of this area that, that is targeted may have been used for illegal dumping, because the draft easement essentially makes the county responsible for maintaining the trails. And I guess the concern would be, we'd have to identify what are pre-existing conditions, hazards, and so forth, I think, in the trail areas, to make sure that the, the county wasn't taking on responsibility that is squarely within Newmont's responsibility right now, if you will. So I, I hazard to say, I think there's still some more work to be done on the proposed easement. And I don't know if the county currently has any type of an agreement with Cloud City Wheelers for this type of a scenario, but if not, that would be my other recommendation, that there'd be some sort of a, an agreement between the county and Cloud City Wheelers about the, the operation and maintenance of this trail.
Thanks, Chris. Do you think that those would be things that we could, I mean, not, I, obviously not the, potentially not the agreement for use of any other trail or agreement between Cloud City Wheelers and Lake County for, for trails and that type of thing, but do you think that the additional information that we need for the Newmont easement, we could work through before our next meeting?
Yeah, I, yes, I've, I've already started marking up. Sterling was kind enough to send me a word version of the proposed easement, so I've started working that up in terms of proposed revisions and my comments and such. So depending on when the next meeting, and I don't know how quickly, you know, if we send this back to them with the markups, how quickly they can turn it back around. I don't know if Sterling has any thoughts on that.
I would guess it would be, you know, a couple, maybe at least give them a week, if not two, to respond. And just to clarify, that Newmont was the entity that prepared this, this easement originally. So I just wanted to let everybody.
Yeah, yeah, I figured as much, by the way, it's written.
Commissioner Mudge and Commissioner Glenn, do you have anything further at this point, questions for Sterling or for Chris?
I don't, I don't have any questions for Sterling. I just want to be completely, of course, transparent. Sterling is my husband and he is a staff member of the board that is asking, the Wheelers Board, asking for this. And I think to Chris, I just want to, I think the easement is, the easement will only be on the trail or a certain, okay, it'll only be 10 feet, I think, so we wouldn't be, I mean, the county co-owns part of the property, or is, is co-title on the title with Newmont for this one section of, I'm wondering how much trail, do we know, is on this section?
I presume you were asking Sterling on that?
It'd be a couple hundred yards on, on the county co-owned property, Alhambra Plaza.
Okay, and I was just gonna say that I'm not as worried about the actual trail, because I believe in the, the quality and dedication of the Cloud City Wheelers to make sure it's a good trail. I think my concern is the breadth of the language in the easement, making the county responsible for any access and use. And so my concern would be if there's a hazard off-trail, that unless the county takes some sort of an action to fence it or to remove it, or something like that, my concern would be if someone got hurt and turned around and tried to sue Newmont, then they would be pointing the finger back at the county in order to indemnify them for that.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. Sterling, would, would it be okay for us to move this to our next meeting, so Chris can bet that language with you, if the two of you can work together on that language, and then, and then we put this for final adoption or, or final consideration on our next meeting?
Yes, that's perfectly all right. I've been working on this for over a year, and I have, I'm a very patient person, as, as is our board and our community members. As far as the existing, you know, I did mention the existing conditions and the illegal, illegal dumping. The majority of this land is located off of the dump road, and, you know, every once in a while, people drive off of the dump road to get rid of their trash in the wrong spot. That being said, the trail doesn't go, the trail stays as far away from the dump road as possible. And, yeah, I just thought I'd mention that. But happy to, happy to take as much time as we need to, to be able to do this correctly.
Thanks, Sterling. We appreciate your patience. Chris, could you work with Sterling then to get that, that language finalized before our next meeting, October 19th?
Certainly. And I guess just to close the circle on it, does the county currently have any type of an agreement with Cloud City Wheelers for these type of operations, or do we need to look at putting something like that together as well?
I don't know that we do. Sterling, do you? Sterling would be the only one that, well, or Sarah would know. Sterling would be the only one that, well, or Sarah would know if we had anything with them. I don't know that we do.
At one point in time, I believe we, we signed an IGA with the county regarding maintenance and construction of the Timberline Trails. It's been, it's been a while since we did that. I know we have, we hold an IGA with Colorado Mountain College. And I believe that's the same, same type of document that we might have signed with the county as well.
Chris, I'll look on I County and see if I can find anything.
Okay. Yeah. And I was just going to ask Sterling if you could dig up copies of those just so I can see what the existing terms are. That would be helpful.
Will do.
So we will move number six to be agenda item number one on our October 19th meeting. Chris will connect with Sterling to vet through some of those questions that she had. And we can go from there. All right. So with that, that brings us to the end of our agenda for new business. The only other thing that we have left is the reports, minutes, bills, and payroll. So I will make a motion that we approve the Veteran Service Officer's Report for September 2020 and bills and payroll for pay period ending September 25th, 2020.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Mudge, do you have any further discussion?
No, sorry. I couldn't get myself on mute.
All good. Commissioner Glenn, do you have any further discussion on that?
I do not.
All right. Seeing then, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Commissioner Glenn, do you have a vote on that?
Pardon me?
Did you have a vote on that?
Yeah, I said aye.
Okay, sorry. I did not hear you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. All right. So with that, I don't believe that we have any further business on our agenda today. So thank you, everyone, for joining us. And we will adjourn today at 2:13 PM. Thank you.
Thank you very much.